This book here, it's called It's Perfectly Normal. I'll read some of this for you. It says, after a bit, a person's becomes moist and slippery and the clitoris becomes hard. After a bit, a person's
Pastor, what did you do?
Becomes erect, stiff and larger. Sometimes a bit of clear fluid that may contain sperm comes out of the tip of the penis and makes it wet.
Pastor, can we, sir, I'm sorry.
Was it something I said? If you don't want to hear it in a school board meeting, why should children be able to check it out of the school system? We have perverts that are perverting our kids. And you all sit back smug in your chairs, but you don't want me to read it. Why? Does it bother you? Yes or no? You can't answer that question. You want to know why? Because politically speaking, you can't say that it's wrong. And you don't want me to read the filth because it exposes the truth. How dare you tell me to stop reading it? If you don't want to hear it, why should the children have to see it?
Pastor, your time is, is, the time is up. Thank you.
That makes two of us.
This is John Matarazzo with Charisma News, and I have the privilege of having Pastor John Amanchakoo with us today to talk about the viral video that he is featured in where he is at the Asheville School Board Meeting, and he is reading one of these books, or at least part of one of these books, that is vile and perverse, and it is things that are definitely anti-God. Why is he reading this book? It's because it's in the, the school's library, available for children. And so Pastor John, it's great to be able to have you here, and thank you so much for speaking boldly, the truth that, that needs to be heard.
Well, thank you so much, John, for having me on your show for this segment. I'm passionate about truth. I'm a pastor. I've been pastoring youth and younger adults for over the past 10 years. But born again Christian, of course. I gave my life to Christ while I was in college paying, playing football at North Carolina State University. I'm a father of three children. I'm a, I'm a husband, and I want our children to go to school and not be indoctrinated into ideologies like critical race theory, gender theory, queer theory, and intersectionality.
Yeah, all those things are really headline issues in our world today. And if, for such a small portion of our culture, they get such a disproportionate attention, I guess. You know, everything from, you know, the, the entire month of June is basically given to depravity. And we're, as we're recording this, we're about to go into the month of June in just a week. And my goodness, let's, let's talk about this clip. And whenever I watched it, I just had this feeling within me, rise up, like, you go Pastor John, you go, like, this is, this is incredible that you would be willing to speak up like this and be really bold. What was your plan for this? And let's start off by answering the question, why Asheville?
All right. So I went to Asheville, I live in Wake County, but I went to Asheville, which was about four hours away. So I drove a total of eight hours to speak for three minutes.
Wow.
No one told me that they would pay me. I wasn't going to pick up a check or anything like that. I was going to really address the school board there because Asheville is known as the wokest city in North Carolina. It's deep, deep, deep blue. And I believe the, the entire school board is Democrat. And so there's a lot of political indoctrination in, in Asheville as well. And so I wanted to go to that city. And to address this book right here, It's Perfectly Normal, which is a book that is for children ages 10 and up. So there are students in elementary schools and middle schools who can get their hands on this book. And this book is, it's not soft porn. It's hard porn. It's hardcore. It would give Swank and Hustle Magazine and Playboy a run for its money. Hugh Hefner has nothing on this, this book. And the book says that it's perfectly normal, but I don't think that what this, this book supports as relates to showing images of straight sex and lesbian sex and gay sex, that's not perfectly normal to put before a child. That's perfectly perverted. And we have to call out the perversion. And I'll say this as well, I don't want to get political, but you know, you kind of have to these days because we're dealing with political issues. There's one political party in this country who supports this kind of stuff, who supports the mutilation of children, the castration of children, the indoctrination of children, the annihilation of children, the murdering of children. And that's the Democrat Party. And that, and the, the entire board in Asheville, they're Democrats. And so to them, this is perfectly normal to sexualize children at a young age and to rob them of their innocence, to put things before them that they should not know before their time. The Bible talks about not awakening love before its time.
Right.
Because when you, when you crack that egg, you know, that egg is now open. When you take the lid off of passion and lust, you know, because these things are natural, e- even within us. You know, the Bible tells us that in our flesh dwells no good thing. But when you begin to put things before them, pornographic materials, make it accessible in libraries in the name of diversity, inclusion and equity, you're on a slippery slope. So I went to Asheville to remind them of the dastardly deeds that they are doing to children. And this book is not simply in Asheville only. This book is in schools all around the country.
Yeah. So how did you come across this book? And when did you first find out about that? And I, I know you've spoken at other school boards as well. Have you used the same, the same tactic or the same model to engage?
Well, similar model, but this is the first time that I addressed this book. I work with a organization called The Pavement Education Project. You can go and take a look at their website. It's thepavementeducationproject.com. And they have archived all of the woke books in North Carolina. The books talk about critical race theory, intersectionality, gender theory, queer theory. These books are pornographic. This organization has gone out and they have archived and cataloged all of these books. So parents can go to this website and see what books are in their schools in North Carolina. And so this organization is epic. I've worked with them throughout this state. Go and follow them, go and support them and see more about what they are doing.
Yeah. So you got this book. When you read it for yourself the first time, what, what were you thinking?
Number one, I was disgusted.
Yeah.
You know, it, it was, I, I had multiple emotions. I was disgusted. I was angry, I was angry. I was filled with righteous indignation. I felt sad, you know? I, I was vexed. I was, I was perplexed also because just thinking about, you know, myself when I was 10 years of age, you know, I could only imagine going to the library and seeing this, you know? I tell, I tell a joke to some people that if this book was in my school library, it probably would have been checked out once and I would have kept it at home and told the librarian that I don't know what happened to it. I turned it in and no, and no one knows where it's, where it's at, you know? This, 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 this kind of material, you know, to a child, they want to see it, you know? Because it's, it's explicit. And just to consider that when I went to that school board meeting and read from this book, the school board members, and in particular, the chairman began to tell me to stop reading. He constantly says, pastor, 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 pastor. And after 10 seconds, I stopped reading. And he says pretty much that he doesn't want me to read it aloud. If you can't read the book in a school board meeting, why on God's earth is that book in the library? It makes no sense.
And whenever I was watching that clip, that was the moment that I saw that Holy Spirit righteous anger rise up in you. I mean, you, you started off with it as you were just reading the book, but
Yes.
I mean, when you went into your, your commentary and you were sharing about basically what you just shared, like, if, if you don't want to hear this, then why are you letting this in? You don't want to hear it from me, why are you letting this for your students?
Right.
And I think the, the, probably the best quote at the, at the very end of that clip is when the, when the chairman said, pastor, your time is up. And you said, that makes two of us. And I was like, oh, wow. I mean, I just felt like this is Elijah, this is like Elijah, the spirit of Elijah mocking the, the prophets of Baal. This is like one of those biblical type of moments that is unfolding right before our very eyes. And I think that's why it went viral, not just because you read a book. I've seen other people do that too. But it was the way that you addressed it with truth.
Yes.
Tell me about your relationship with the Holy Spirit, because he was the one that was bold, that boldness in you was rising up because you so eloquently made your argument with that.
Well, it's, it's always the anointing of God. It's not me. I'm, I'm man, you know? I'm, I'm, I, I'm fallible, you know? Born in sin, shaping in iniquity. Christ has forgiven me for my sins and covered me in his blood. But at the end of the day, I'm a human. And so I depend upon the third part of the Trinity. That's the Holy Spirit that indwells me and gives me the words to say in the proper timing. I believe that when you have the Holy Spirit, number one, it will testify of Christ beyond just speaking in tongues. You will testify and be a witness to the truth. And that's what I did in that moment. And Scripture tells us to take no thought for what we will say, you know? Because in that moment, God will give us what we should say. And so I read, read, read the book and I had some thoughts in my mind or anything to think as relates to how I would position the conversation. But I never would have known in a million years that I would be cut off and told to stop reading. And all of a sudden, the Holy Spirit just took control. You can see it in the video, you know? Luke chapter 17, verse 2 says that it's better for a man to be thrown into, into the sea with a millstone tied around, around his neck than for us to do harm or damage to a child. You know, there are so many people in this country who are harming children. They are perverting children, corrupting the minds of children. You know, if you consider the abortion clinic, they, abortion industry, they want to eliminate children. When you consider the public school system, I mean, even some of your private Christian schools, you know? They've gone woke. They want to indoctrinate children. And so there's so many attacks that are being launched and hurled upon children. And so it's going to take men and women full of the Spirit. Just consider the power that indwelled Peter on the day of Pentecost. You know, everyone around, around thought that those who were speaking in tongues were, you know, were drunk, you know, on wine. But Peter said, no, this is that, that was spoken of by the prophet Joel, you know? God will pour out a spirit in the last days and sons and daughters will prophesy. And so Peter began to preach in a manner that they had never heard before. We finally see Peter, the rock man, transformed into that strong anchor that Christ knew he would be before he told him that Satan would come and sift him as wheat. And so today we need boldness. And in particular, in the church, we need the pastors in this country to stand up. Many of our pastors have become weak and frail, you know? They have lost their voice. They, they've lost their backbone. They won't speak up. You know, they've become spineless. You know, I say this all the time, that there are three things that every pastor needs. They need a jawbone, a backbone and a tailbone. They need a, a jawbone so that they can speak up, a backbone so that they can stand up, and a tailbone so that they can hold up. Our pastors, many, many pastors in America have blood on their hands because they have failed to be true watchmen. Watchmen are called not simply to watch, but to warn. So we must, we must watch and warn. And I got fed up in just hearing about what's going on in this country and in North Carolina and even Nashville. So I went down there and I not, not only showed them what was in the book, I made a strong defense against it.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that, as we're talking about the Holy Spirit's role in what you just did and how you being filled with the Holy Spirit and letting the Holy Spirit rise up with you, you know, I'm reminded that the Holy Spirit reminds us of the things that, that we've learned.
Yes.
And one of the best ways that I want to encourage people to learn is through your book, Erased, uncovering the lies of the critical race theory and abortion.
Yes, yes.
And that book came out in October, and I just want to encourage people to get ahold of that. And if you wouldn't mind just, just talking about, what are some of the things that people are going to learn as they get ahold of this book and they read it for themselves? Because you're teaching a lot about this woke ideology. And as we get into this, could you explain what woke actually is? Because I think it's, it's a term that a lot of people just don't understand. They don't have a good definition for it. But what are things that people are going to learn that the Holy Spirit can then, at the right moment, remind them of as they read your book?
Right. And so woke was a term that became popular a few, several years ago where those who pushed, I would say more so individuals who pushed racial tension, people who were race baiters and race hustlers. They claimed that they were woke and that they were knowledgeable of the plight of Black Americans in America and how they were disenfranchised. They claimed that they were woke. But many of these people are not woke. They need to be awakened. They need to be awakened by the truth. And so in my new book, Erased, uncovering the lies of critical race theory and abortion, I address the racist foundation of the abortion industry and the racist foundation of critical race theory. The Bible tells us in Isaiah chapter 5, verse 20, it says, woe to those who call evil good and good evil, who put darkness for light and light for darkness, who put bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter. Today, we are calling critical race theory and abortion good, but really evil. Margaret Sanger, founder of Planned Parenthood, said that she wanted to eliminate the, the Negro population and that she would use the Black charismatic preacher to assist her in doing so. And what has happened today? By and large, the majority of the Black church supports the Democrat Party. And the Democrat Party, by and large, supports Planned Parenthood and abortion on demand. Margaret Sanger is probably in the hottest part of hell, but her mission is still alive. And then when it comes to critical race theory, we know that before there was critical race theory, there was this philosophy called critical theory that started in the Frankfurt School of Germany by Karl Marx. It's really Marxism. But in critical theory, there's this
I want to talk about that because I was watching a, a message that you preached that you call Be Salt Not Sugar. And I love the, the, the thing that you said, most churches pastors deal with diabetes when they should be dealing with high blood pressure. The salt versus sugar thing, it really connects there. But
Yes.
Talk about this Stockholm syndrome and how are we relating to that right now? Because you were explaining something that was really powerful in that. And it's kind of, it's helping me actually see some things that I wasn't seeing how it was being applied in our world today. It's actually kind of being forced upon us in a lot of ways.
That's right. You know, in Stockholm syndrome, that took place in the, the story and where that term came from, came from 1973 in Sweden. A man by the name of Jan Erik Olsen went into a Swedish bank and hijacked the bank. He wanted $700,000, a getaway car, and his friend Clark, Clark Olafson to be released from prison as well. And then he wanted to use the hostages, hostages as shields as he left the bank. And so they gave him everything he wanted, but the opportunity to use the hostages as shields. And so a standoff ensued for several days in that bank, but something strange took place. The people who were in there as hostages began to become friendly with the person and the individuals who took them hostage. They fell in love with their captors. And that's what has happened today in the culture. Even the church in some areas, we are falling in love with the world. But we are called by God to put a difference between holy and unholy, clean and unclean. But we are falling in love with the world. We're making unholy alliances. And so we are loving on and embracing our captors and those things that seek to hold us hostage. And from that act in 1973, when Clark Olafson and Jan Erik Olsen held that bank up and, and, and a hyst, the term Stockholm syndrome came from that. And in the Black community, there are so many, so many Black people who are beholden to a political party that seeks to destroy them. Why would you support the Democrat Party knowing that they push abortion on demand? 20 million Black babies have been aborted in America since 1973. Blacks make up 13% of the overall population in America. Black men account for only 5% of that number, and Black women account for 8%. And of the Black women who are still ovulating, they account for nearly 3% to 4% of the Black population. But they also, they also account for nearly 38 to 40% of the overall populations in, of, of the overall abortions rather, in America. So 3 to 4% of Black women account for 38 to 40% of the overall abortions in the U.S. Why would we be held captive by a hostage, by a political party that seeks to kill us and destroy us? I can't figure it out. I don't know. But what I'm doing is traveling the country and reminding people that I don't get my talking points from the RNC or the DNC. I get my talking points from the BIBLE.
Amen, amen. You know, Pastor John, one of the things that, that really stood out to me was how much I don't know about the history of, of the, the civil rights movement and how, you know, I, I basically know that Martin Luther King Jr. was the, this giant voice that we have. And so much is rightly accredited to him. But the, the civil rights movement has gone a different direction. And in, as you were telling the story in, in a sermon that I was just listening to, and I will put the link in that, in the bio, in the description below. But that, one of the things that you were talking about was the NAACP giving up to, giving up for funds to another group. And as you were explaining about this, and I'd like you to kind of dive into this, I was just thinking about how Esau sold his birthright for a stew of lentils and how that just seems to be a, a right biblical correlation of how you can give up what, what was supposed to be yours.
Right. And, and, and that's what's happened. There was once a true, genuine civil rights movement. Now, they had some caricatures, some individuals in it who probably didn't have the right sentiments towards bringing about true and wholesome unity. But for the most part, it was a movement that was centered around making sure that Blacks received equality and to make sure that we could get rid of the Jim Crow laws that were so rampant in the South. But the NAACP today, the modern day NAACP, they are less concerned about the advancement of colored people, but more concerned about the advancement of queer people. And I say that because Ben Jealous, one of the, one of the, one of the leaders of the NAACP, when he saw that the NAACP was in the red, he came up with a way to bring in more funding, more money. You know, when you follow the money, you begin to find out what's really going on. And so he brought, he took upon himself the agenda and the mission of, of supporting the LGBTQ agenda. And from that, you know, he went from being in the jet red to being in the jet black. And all the funds came in, you know, because during that timeframe, they were offering lifetime membership rights. You know, whenever you start offering lifetime memberships, that tells you that you're getting ready to go defunct and that there's a, a cash flow problem. And so just to see where the NAACP has, has come to and how far they have strayed is a travesty. They even have the NAACP now, it's a current story that's out, that's telling individuals not, telling Black people not to travel to Florida, you know? Just coming, just coming up with silly stuff. But you know, last year when Roe v. Wade was overturned, this same NAACP that's supposed to be about advancing, you know, colored people, right? They came out and said that they felt that the overturning of Roe v. Wade would be damaging towards Blacks. You know, it, it, it makes, it makes no sense. There's a Holocaust that's being wrought in America and in particular, on Black America. And the NAACP has failed woefully. You couldn't pay me $10 million to become a member of the NAACP. I wouldn't wear a NAACP shirt for $5 million because I disagree wholeheartedly with what they stand for today.
Not historically, but today.
But today, not historically, but today, correct.
Yeah. You know, Pastor John, as we're wrapping up here, I'm going to ask you to pray for those that are watching right now in, in just a moment. But I want to encourage everybody that, you know, we talked about two different books during this, during this. that, you know, we talked about two different books during this, during this interview here. One of them was It's Perfectly Normal. And yeah, that's the one that we want to encourage people to not get and actually speak up against the, that book. But the book that I want to encourage you to get is Erased. What is it? Uncovering the Lies of Critical Race Theory and Abortion.
Yes.
I had a little bit of trouble reading the, uh, reading the byline there, but that's okay. The, but get that book because you want to be able to speak up when God tells you to speak up, just like Pastor John did.
Yes.
You want to be able to speak up with boldness and know what it is that you're talking about too. And let the Holy Spirit rise within you and let him be the one to encourage you and give you those words. But Pastor John, would you please pray for those people that are watching this right now? That are saying, I want to do something. I want to be able to speak up like that, but I just don't have that boldness. I don't, I don't think I can do that. Would you just pray for them right now?
Yes, I'll do it. And for those of you who are watching, you can go to eracedbook.com to get a copy of this book that John is talking about. It's E-R-A-C-E-D-book.com. I took the S out and put a C there. It's E-R-A-C-E-D-book.com. You can go there, purchase a copy of my book and you can support me and help me get to school boards around the country as I launch the erased project and I bring in pastors and men to stand up and to use their voice and stop being neutered by feminists. John, I have to say this, that many men have abdicated their role and responsibility in the culture. They're silent. They won't speak up. If a man speaks up and he's assertive today, he's labeled as having toxic masculinity. If he's the beta and he's more reserved, you know, they say that's bad as well. So men are perplexed and they don't know what to do. And I'm trying to remind men in the culture that we must speak up and defend the sanctity of womanhood and our children. Protect them, shield them, provide for them. That's the role of the man. The glory of the man is the woman. But today we have many men trying to rob women of their glory. Men, we need you to stand up. Dear heavenly Father God, we thank you because you do all things well. You are perfect. You have perfectly provided a perfect sacrifice for us. And God, we do not hate those who despitefully use us. We understand the enemy's plan. We understand the false accusation of critical race theory. In the Greek, the term false accuser gives you the word diabolos, which means serpent or devil. We see Satan behind critical race theory. We see Satan behind gender theory. We see Satan behind queer theory. As we go to school boards and as I speak and as we call upon others to join us, help us, oh God, to see the enemy as the enemy and mankind as an opportunity. We pray, oh God, that revival, true revival will come as a result of us standing and contending for our up and coming generation, our children. Lord, you told us in your word, your scripture tells us that children are a heritage. God, help us to protect our heritage. Use us and empower us and give us the Holy Spirit that we might speak boldly and courageously. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Pastor John Amancu, it's great to be able to have you here on Charisma News. Thank you so much. God bless and keep doing that for the kingdom.
Thank you so much. Hey, go get a copy of the book. Support the efforts of the Erased Movement. Eracedbook.com, E-R-A-C-E-D-book.com. And follow me on social media at R-E-V-W-U Truth, R-E-V-W-U Truth. Follow me on all platforms, Instagram, YouTube, Rumble, Twitter, you name it. God bless you.
Amen. Amen.
In an upside down world, there is only one way to stay grounded. Life is full of twists and turns, successes and setbacks. How can you reach your God given potential and achieve your dreams? With over four decades of reporting on the move of the Holy Spirit around the world, Stephen E. Strang has firsthand experience of how the Holy Spirit has led him on a remarkable journey of faith and a successful life. In his new book, Spirit Led Living in an Upside Down World, he will invest his true life lessons into the hearts of readers as he reveals his secrets to having a successful life led by the Holy Spirit. Go to booksbystevestrang.com to preorder your copy today.